Good evening and welcome to our July 15, 2025 voting meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Feig, would you please take roll call?
Jason Mill, Julia Schaefer.
Present.
Deborah Bloom.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Present.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
Timothy Morgan. Travis Odom.
Here.
Allison Wilson. Six present, three absent.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the six board members in attendance this evening, we are also joined at the board table by our Solicitor Sharon Montane and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller, Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Mrs. Diane Skornavaki, Director of Human Resources, as well as Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. There are no amendments to tonight's agenda. Prior to the meeting, the board did meet an executive session to discuss personnel matters. And, Dr. Haller, Superintendent, report.
Good, good evening, everyone. I'd just like to welcome you to the meeting and let you know that even though we only just celebrated July 4th, the district is very busy preparing for the start of the 25-26 school year. Thank you to our HR department for all their hard work in getting, making sure that we have our classroom staffed appropriately, and to our Facilities Department for ensuring that our buildings are clean and our outside of our buildings look wonderful for our students when they return. So even though our kids are getting a break, we are certainly not, and we're looking forward to welcoming students back into school in the next couple of weeks. So, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Dr. Haller. There are no one signed up for a public comment, so we'll move on to, let's see here, our meeting minutes. If there's no objections, we will adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from our last month's board meetings from June 3, 2025, Committee of the Whole Meeting, and June 17, 2025, Board Voting Meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Onto our Treasury Report and Payment Requests. If there's no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve the June 2025 Treasury Report Payment Request dated June 18, 2025 through July 15, 2025. Hearing no objections, the Treasury Report and Payment Requests are approved. Okay, on to committees. Mr. Fiddler, can you please handle the Education Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. The first item, Item A, is, requires no board action. It's our enrollment report as we get every month. If there are any questions from the board, now is the time to ask them of the administration. All right, hearing none. We have Item B, Conference Requests. I believe there's just one on the agenda for tonight. Yes, it is recommended that the Board of Directors approve the following staff conference, as noted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Item C, Items for Disposal. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the disposal of the attached list of Lorraine Elementary Reading Media Materials that are outdated and no longer used.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item D, Statement of Work for Agreement to Perform Services for the Exeter Township School District. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the contract with the BCIU to provide professional development for ESL, English as a Second Language Teachers, as detailed in the contract, at a cost of $1,500, to be paid with Title III funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question, is this kind of a repeat for this time of year?
Yes, typically this time of year, we bring this to the board. As part of receiving Title III funds, we are required to provide professional development through the use of those funds, and these are funds from the 2024-25 fiscal year. We are allowed to spend those funds up until September 30. So, the title is on a little bit of a different fiscal calendar than academic and the typical July 1 and June 30. So, this specific professional development will be for K-12 ESL teachers. There's a Program Administrator from the IU, Katie, who I've worked with previously, who's considered the ESL Program Administrator Expert, who'll be working with them, as this is a population that's growing significantly in the district, so.
Okay, thank you. And this current situation in Washington begs this question. So, this contract is not subject to the decisions by the administration to eliminate certain funds. I think the total is 6.8 billion. This doesn't fall into that, or does it?
No, this does not, because these are still 2024-2025 allocated funds. We currently did not, our funding was taken away for 2025 and '26 for Title III.
For the upcoming year.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item E, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the K-12 Guidance Plan and the Required Update on a five-year cycle to align with the school's PDE, that's the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Approved Program Evaluation, APE 339. I'm not sure what that means. Maybe we could get someone to clarify that, of the school where students are sent to gain PDE-approved CTE instruction.
So, what we're going to do this evening is just go through.
I need a second.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Any discussion?
I wonder if you could go through, Josh, the, some of those acronyms for.
Correct. So, sorry about that. So, the APE 339 is just, it's the Chapter 339, which is one of those mandates that's required, and that's related to career, implementing the career standards and career benchmarks for K-12. And that is a part of, a part of that now is also to have a K-12 Guidance Plan. So, that's just legislation that's required for school districts to do.
Got it. I do have a question, it might be more of a comment than a question, but I was very impressed, I gather that the questions on this document, all of which are answered yes, the questions come from the state? Is that?
That's correct. So, very similar to other ones that I've brought before the board, the FID Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, they have required templates that you have to answer those specific questions, and then you have to upload sources of evidence to, it's called the PDE Suite, which is where they house all of their documents for plans and programs and such like that.
And I was very impressed, I'm looking for it and I can't find it, of course. There's one, one of these items talks about having these career guidance services for all, here we go, it's number nine. Does your school maintain a listing of career guidance service activities, e.g., events, tours, and interventions organized by grade level and focused on increasing awareness of career and technical education opportunities among all K-12 students? I like that word "all," and that appears several times in this document. So, I'm still, my heart is still with those 72 students. I asked about them in the June Committee of the Whole Meeting, the 72 students who, seniors, who listed no career plans on their Facebook profiles. Now, in talking with some people, I've come to recognize that that doesn't necessarily mean that they don't have plans, it just means that they didn't announce their plans, which is their prerogative. However, as a former advocate for kids, and I still like to think I am, can you, can you talk a little bit about what this looks like in the school? Kids are going to be coming back to school in a month, first day of school. Do the seniors get to meet with a career counselor? Must they take the initiative, or do the counselors reach out to all of the seniors and say, "Okay, guys, this is your last year, you gotta, you know, you gotta start thinking about what you're going to do after graduation"? Can you talk about the mechanics a little bit on how that, how that works?
Sure. We have a couple of slides for the plan itself that we can go into to discuss that, because there's specific grade levels where you have to hit benchmarks. So, we can talk about that, and we, and we can certainly, myself and Alicia can answer any questions. I helped us to work with Dr. Elkaro, Dawn, and our school counselors with regards to the Chapter 339 component, and Alicia helps and really does a wonderful job helping to coordinate the mental health and social-emotional learning aspect of it. So, we could come up.
Why they're bringing that up, though, back to your original question about how we determine career readiness, that, that's the whole point of Chapter 339, is to start very early on with students, to develop an awareness and sense of the different opportunities for careers that are out there. So, each year, our students, our teachers, our school counselors are working with students to educate them on different opportunities, and then they need to make sure they have artifacts from that. So, you, I know that you've been part of the career fair that has happened at the junior high. That, that's all part of this, of plan, to make sure that students have different levels of exposure to help develop a sense of what careers are available to them. So, and that's, that's part of the plan, but not all of it. There's other, there's other components which they're going to dig into a little bit now when they go over the slides.
Great.
All right. So, we have a couple of slides to showcase and hopefully answer some of the questions with regards to this. One of the reasons why we are doing this, and it's never been done before, Sheldon, you can go to the next slide, is that, starting in January of 2024, it became a requirement to have a school board approval and an LEA for your, your K-12 plan. Previously, for a number of years, there has been a plan in this school district, in every school district in the state of Pennsylvania. It was just a team, a committee, a team came together, they went through what PDE required, and showcased and added the evidence with regards to what their plan was going to be. And that also was on a multi-year cycle. So, the only change that with regards to this, like I mentioned, is that it does require score, a school board approval every five years. So, with regards to this, just like we have math standards and language arts standards, we also now have K-12, they're called CEW, they're the Career Education Work Standards, and those are things that are grade level specific. These are things that are implemented by a lot of staff members, not just school counselors. So, they are things that are embedded within the classroom instruction. If you're familiar with Mr. Ricketts, Mr. Mark Ricketts, he's our Internship Coordinator at the high school, that's where a lot of this work gets done. But our school counselors have a tremendous focal point in regards to supporting all students with regards to this. But it's an opportunity for getting students to get an awareness of careers, awareness of how to prepare themselves, to really know what's out there in an ever-changing world. So, again, that's the biggest change here, is that we just require that approval. So, you can go to the next slide. So, if you recall back in the late fall, early winter, when we presented the academic data to the board and the community, another part that's on the Future Ready Portal that school districts get publicized and evaluated on is in regards to the Career Education and Work Standards. So, there are three specific grade levels where there are benchmarks that have to be hit. And how we do this, long story short, is that these, this evidence is collected through the work of our staff. We have software that helps to collect this evidence, and then it gets pulled from that software into the state. So, when you take a look at grades 5, 8, and 11 in our school district, we are actually, again, as a reminder, the blue means we are exceeding the expectation of what the goal was for Exeter Township School District. So that, you see, there's the statewide average there, are this, what the bottom one is the performance standard of where we're supposed to be, and then the very top number there is what our percentage is. So, just like with the academic data where all students have to meet certain criteria, additionally, any subgroup that you have in your school or school district also has to meet that same. So, if we have a subgroup of special education students, you have to have at least 20, they have to meet that same benchmark. And any of the different race and ethnicities as well can become a subgroup. But again, you see that we are exceeding that standard. So, for our different grade spans, to answer that question, so if you're a fifth grade, by the end of fifth grade, you have to have six pieces of evidence. And those pieces of evidence can be anywhere from investigating a career, attending a career fair, meeting with your counselor, engaging in a lesson about careers, any of those types of activities. And what the goal by the end of grade five is for students to start to investigate a career path. And they have to, they recommend that at least two of those have to be from grades 3, 4, and 5. As you get to grade 8, you have to have six additional pieces of evidence that are above the K-5 span. So, you're looking in that grade 6 to 8 range. And then, in addition to that, instead of investigating a career path, now they want you to start to develop a career path, a career pathway. And then, when you get to 11th grade, by the end of that 11th grade year, you have to have eight additional pieces of evidence, and then you have to have an individualized career path associated with that. And that could be from wanting to be a marine biologist, wanting to go into the military, wanting to go to a two-year degree, wanting to go into the workforce. Any of those are considered a career path. You can go to the next slide.
So, so, can we back up just real quick on that one slide? So, we want our kids to start learning, understanding what their career path is in fifth grade? Is that third? Oh, my bad. Okay.
Well, they, they'd start to really learn, really learn about different careers. So, so that's why we, the career fairs are a great opportunity to do that, because it's a great way to connect with our community. I came in and did one on behalf of being on the board for ECEF about technology, and talked to kids about that, like what, you know, what does somebody who works in technology integration do, instead of, you know, just typing on a keyboard and playing with a mouse? So, but, you know, so it's, it's more of that, getting that exposure to it, because there's so many jobs right now that exist that didn't exist a couple of years ago. Like, data science, a data scientist right now is probably the most in-demand job, and it's, it is a job that many kids have no idea what that even means. So. So, that's why in the high school, that internship program is really one of the most beneficial experiences for students, because they get to partner with an individual, a group of individuals there, and we have students all over the place in internships, whether it's architectural firms, education, the medical industry, East Penn Manufacturing, going into a daycare, all those different things. You know, for me, I wish I would have started to work with engineers before I went into architectural engineering for three years. I would have realized I didn't want to be an engineer. So, that would have been a, a great thing for me. But, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tremendous, tremendous opportunity for our kids. And I, if you have not been to a career fair, I really recommend you attend one, because the kids really get excited, they ask a lot of great questions, and then they go home and they talk to their parents and their guardians about different careers, and it really helps to solidify them to create a pathway moving forward.
Josh, where does testing, if at all, fit into this process? And let me just give some background. I remember I was sort of struggling. Unfortunately, we didn't have, I went here to school, and senior year, we didn't have a terribly good guidance counselor. We just didn't. I won't say any more than that. But there were no, there was no testing. And fortunately, right around the corner from me in Penside was a guy named Dr. Ed Gilbert, who taught psychology at Albright and was a member of this board, and he recommended to my parents that I take the MMPI. I don't know if that's still offered, Minnesota Multiphasic Personality Inventory, that was supposed to help you figure out, what did you like, what don't you like, what do you like doing this task, do you not like doing this, this task, so on. It's a very long test, it was a whole day, as I recall. Are we using those kinds of tools to help kids figure out, gee, I don't like to do this with my hands, but I like to do this with my mind?
Yeah, there's multiple criteria and assessments that they look at. We have ASFAB testing, we have students who, in, you know, in different classes, they'll, they'll bring up different types of assessments with related to careers, you know, and kids who are in dual enrollment, kids who are going to the CTC, kids who do the CTC visit, like, that's where they also, they get some of those multiple different pieces, to be able to ask those questions and see, like, really, what are they, they enter. We bring in some speakers, sometimes teachers will bring in to talk about things. So, you know, there's, we try to find different ways with regards to do that. I get a little sensitive about testing sometimes, because the kids take so many assessments right now, that it's, it's, you know, adding in a lot more assessments for them. It can sometimes be a challenge, but, you know, we certainly do whatever we can. The counselors work really, really hard to work with the kids and their families to really help to identify what's their plan, because that's, that's really what the main goal is, is for, when the kids leave here, is like, what's your plan? Like, do you have a plan? And, you know, plans certainly changed, you know, we all know that. I changed majors three times, you know, and, you know, some kids decide to go, go to college later on, some kids decide to switch fields in their businesses. So, but, long story short, you know, we definitely look at multiple criteria to try and help kids make that determination.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's just a summation up there of, again, like, if you're, the K-5 span, they want to really start to get into that engagement and career exploration, and that 6 to 8 component, they really start to individualize that. So, now they're honing in and targeting that, and then by the end of high school, they're, they have really an identified plan of really what they want to do. And again, those are all aligned to the CEW, the Career Education Work Standards. They have to be aligned to those. So, I'm going to turn it over to Alicia, who's going to talk about the mental health side of the plan as well, because that is a required component of it, too.
I'm going to have you go to the next slide, Sheldon. And I'll talk from here. So, this is our multi-tiered systems of support for behavior and mental health. This is on our website. Dawn developed this with us. It's been two years now, right, that we've had this? It's one of a kind. There's really no one in the county that has anything like this. And if you go under each of the tabs, you can see different stuff that we're doing in Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, for behavioral concerns and trauma and universal practices. But what I'm going to tell you a little bit about is our social-emotional learning program. So, and I told you guys about this last board meeting, I think, we talked a little bit about this, that we have council on chemical abuse come in, and they come in K through 8s, and they provide different social-emotional learning curriculum. The students are allowed to opt out of it, so it's an opt-out program. But I will say that we had no one K through 6 opt out of the program. So, it's a very good, robust program. And then, we also have this year, starting teen mental health first aid, that's our program that we are in, a two-year cohort with Pro Wellness, Penn State Pro Wellness, and that'll be in our 9th grade Health and Wellness classes, that they'll be teaching mental health to those kids. That's a six weeks, so six sessions they'll get on that, on everything to do with mental health and substance abuse. And.
And these things are for kids who want to go into the, think they want to go into these fields?
These are more for just social-emotional learning, so this doesn't have to do with the field. But I will tell you that, like, having the people that we're having come into 9th grade and do the training, it's people from BCIU that are coming in, and it's also people from Burke's Counseling Center that are contracted with them. So, they're licensed therapists. So, it could be an opportunity for kids to see what licensed therapists do, what they do at the BCIU, how mental health and social-emotional learning kind of fall into that. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if you do have kids that are very passionate about your well, their well-being and mental health, that they would find these people pretty interesting and maybe look at that. So, it could be an opportunity to do that. We also, on more of the mental health side, if you guys remember, we have a new student assistance program through Inspired Wellness. So, K through 4th, we have school counselors leading them, but we have a liaison, those teams. And then, 6 through 12th, we have teachers leading the team, also with a liaison from Inspired Wellness there. And they're running groups, psychoeducational groups, and doing programming as well, all on the mental health side. And then, we also have an MOU with concern counseling. And so, if people want school-based therapy at school, still has to go through their insurance, but we have that provided, and we have six therapists throughout K through 12 that are there pretty much every day of the week to support them. Any other questions?
All right. So, again, all we would be asking is, is the next step is, is for this plan to be approved, and then the final phase is for us to submit that plan to PDE and see if they have any questions or any things that they would like us to amend, so.
I have one more question, then I'll, I'll leave the, leave the 72 alone, because they were in last year's class. And they're probably doing better than I, than I, than I think they are. Is it safe to say that each one of those 72 had at some point a counseling session with one of the career counselors to talk about what opportunities? Because I'm still not clear on how it works. Do, must they reach out to the counselors, or do the counselors reach out to the students in the 12th grade?
Yeah, so, our counselors do reach out to the students and families. They have various meetings, they have a lot of communication that they, they track. We use a system called Naviance for that. And, you know, some will have multiple meetings with, with, with kids and families, and do a lot of checking in. The high school administration and counselors keep a very robust list of the kids who are still trying to figure out what perhaps that career portfolio or plan is going to be, because, again, we have to collect that evidence to see that, to submit it. But as you can see, based upon the percentages, we have an extremely high percentage of students who are, are doing those things, meeting with and having those plans, so.
And I guess I lied, I still have one more question. One of the numbers, I think it's number 14, talks about a report that's available as a result of all this work with counselors. Are those reports available for the public to see?
I would have to look into that with regards to that, because there's a lot of student identifiable, identifiable information in those, but.
But I mean, just not so much regarding specific information, but how many of the kids actually went to, you know, I did a chart, I'm no statistician, but I did a chart. We had, I think, 160-some go to college, or say they were going to college. It seems to me that if we did a report every year, then we could say, well, 160 said they were going to college, but only 130 actually went, or maybe 190 went. Maybe some of those 72 decided to go to college.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't really be able to, to track that.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't really be able to, to track that because once students graduate, they, they're not in communication with us anymore. So even if we sent out a survey, there would be no way for us to ensure that, to collect that, that data.
Let me just see if I can find the wording of that.
Yeah, we go by what they want, that what they want or plan to do. But it's, it's very challenging for, for us to be able to track what did they actually do.
Right. But I do remember seeing something about a report.
It, I, I, you're probably mentioning the Student Interest Survey, which we give at the end. But again, that's, um, you know, that's, that's if they, exactly. It's what, what they would, would like to do, not necessarily what did they do.
Yeah. Number 14, does your school conduct follow-up studies to determine the effectiveness of your school counseling curriculum slash program outcomes that includes study results and how the information collected is utilized to improve service delivery? Uh, the follow-up study should be available during Perkins and APTE slash 339 compliance reviews. That's what I was, is that available, that kind of information for the public?
I, I will look into that for it, yeah. But I mean, just like everything else, their academics, even our school counselors focus on the cycle of improvement. So we're always trying to, to determine how can we do things better? Um, how can we look at and help students that, you know, are, are still on the cusp of things? And, and how can we really make sure that students want to do what they plan to do? So, you know, that cycle of improvement is something that's all content areas, K to 12.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item F, the VLN contract addendum. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve an addendum between VLN Partners LLP and the Exeter Township School District regarding pricing updates to log in seats for senior high school students. I think that needs a little bit of translating from somebody.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay. Sorry, Andrea. Could somebody translate that a little bit for the, for us and for the public?
Sure. So VLN is a vendor that is used for our credit recovery program. Um, so it's a, a way that we have students who, if they need to catch up for credits, um, students who could take online courses. So this is something that we run in conjunction with our Exeter Cyber Academy. Um, this is just a yearly update to, on that contractor. It's the not raising costs. Alicia does a, a great job of working with them. She really helps and works with students who are in this program as well as the high school administration, high school administration and school counselors. Uh, we have 50 seats for this. And, and you know, what's nice about this is that once a student completes and then they leave, that seat then becomes available. So it's a very fluid, um, it's, it's not that that seat's then taken over. So it's just, it's a great way for us to, to help some students who might be in some very unique situations. Um, students who, again, just want to recover because perhaps they didn't pass a class and it allows them to catch up. So they don't drop out.
Got it. Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, ESY agreement. Uh, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the tuition agreements between the Vista School and the Exeter Township School District to provide extended school year services for two students for the period July 7th, 2025 through August 8th, 2025 at a rate of $10,326.28 per student.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, item H, Vista Tuition Agreement. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a tuition agreement between the Vista School and the Exeter Township School District for special education services for two students for the 2025-2026 school year at the annual tuition rate of $79,310 per student.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Mrs. Schaefer, that concludes the Education Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Personnel with Dr. Herring.
Thank you. I'm going to cut it up just a little bit. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following resignations, retirements, appointments, transfers, change of status, additional assignments, and leave of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached updated job description for the Assistant Business Manager.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached list of course requests.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mrs. Schaefer, I just wanted to welcome Diane Donahue. Our new Assistant Business Manager is here in the audience. I'd like to say welcome and congratulations. Also, if I might point out that we are having a job fair for support staff on Thursday, July 30th at Reifden from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And that's everything.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Onto finance and audit, Mr. Odom.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Um, the item A, um, this, there's no board reaction, action at this time. Um, it says, due to a significant increase in annual renewal fee for VMware software approximately 70% over the previous year's cost, the district has evaluated alternative purchasing options. To mitigate this sharp increase and ensure budget predictability, the district will enter into a three-year annual agreement with VMware. Now, this agreement reduces the overall increase to 35% and locks into the annual rate of $20,026.88 through August 29th, 2028. The multi-year approach provides cost stability and ensures continued access to critical virtualization infrastructure necessary for district operations.
Travis, I know you're just filling in as I was, but I am curious to know the reasons for this significant increase. Does anyone in the?
Sheldon, yes. Yeah. Ultimately, the company was bought out by another company, Broadcom, and they made significant changes to their licensing structure. Um, they moved to what most technology companies do now, which is an annual license, um, whereas VMware was not that before. Um, so that, that's in part of what we were only paying for support for every year. Now we are paying for support and the privilege to use their software. Um, as well as, um, they're, they're trying to lock in, you know, some users with their multi-years. So, you know, traditionally, we had been doing one years. We tried to do one years to maintain some of that flexibility so that we don't get locked into a, a service that we are not happy with. But what I will say is we have been using this service since at least 2013, as long as I've been here. Um, we are very happy with the product itself. Not very happy with this sharp increase since they were taken over. But, um, they are the industry leader, they are the gold standard in this. Um, we have done some due diligence to look at some other vendors. Um, we were not comfortable in, in making that jump yet. So this is where we went back to the reseller to kind of say, okay, what can we do to get this cost down? Um, and that's where, you know, they gave us a somewhat significant discount in the multi-year. And we also tried to make that a somewhat shorter term. So it's not, you know, a five or 10-year commitment as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, onto item B, um, 25-26 food service meal pricing. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the 25-26 Exeter Township School District meal pricing. This is an increase of 10 cents per meal. The weighted average is based on adjusting the school year 24-25 price required by the 2% rating Clarice plus the Consumer Price Index of 4.03%.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, Memorandum of Understanding with the Central Burke's Regional Police Department. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a Memorandum of Understanding with the Central Burke's Regional Police Department.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ms. Schaefer, that include, that concludes the Finance and Audit Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. Dr. Battler, uh, Facilities and Transportation.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the direct district participation in Burke's County Joint Purchasing Board Bid. Oh, sorry, for trash removal services. The bid was awarded to Republic Services for a two-contract period, July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the Johnson Controls Quotation to install the main drain for the wet sprinkler ri- riser in the junior high school and replacement of the corroded OS and Y valve. I don't know what that is. Quotation is attached. Just letting everybody know.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Anyways, um, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the Johnson Controls Quotation to replace the four-inch sprinkler system piping that is corroded and leaking at Jacksonwald Elementary. Quotation is attached.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I actually have a question for Johnson, about Johnson. Is this, um, I guess this is for you, Brian. Are, are these the only folks who can do this work? Is that because they?
It's because it's their system and they.
Okay.
Yeah. But it needs to be done. We're trying to.
Sure.
Take care of before it comes to issue.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve Berkshire Mechanical Denny's Electric Proposals for the plumbing work at the senior high school and the junior high school. The proposals are attached.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Why reason an electric company to do plumbing work?
Thank you. That was going to be my question.
If I might be.
I, I believe, if I'm right, the junior high has mixing valves in the showers and that's electrical, so you don't scold the kids. So they have to make sure this temperature controls and that's not a plumber issue in the locker rooms.
I didn't even know they took showers. Okay, sorry. Gotcha. I have a junior high.
So that's why you have electrician, because they take care of the.
Gotcha.
The controls.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Finally, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the Solar for Schools Program Grant Contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I, I do want to say this was reviewed by the solicitor. Yes.
A while ago, yes.
And where is this, Brian? Can you bring us up to speed a little bit on, on the progression for getting toward the, the project itself? Where, what step is this?
Well, this step is accept the grant. We actually have another 10 days left before we have to, they take away the, the grant. We have to sign the documents. Uh, the committee, the whole meeting, we will have a presentation on the actual project, the financials and, um, you know, an update on the, um, what would I say, the incentives from the federal government, from the locals. Uh, we actually have to get started within a year. And get started would mean order the converter, which is a long lead time item at 13 months. Uh, to get the local med ed incentives, we have to finish next year. The proposal I'm going to be bringing to the board in the Cow meeting is basically, we'll start late spring and finish in three months. Uh, we have the end of the year to, actually, two years to complete, but the end of next year to get the local incentives from med ed. Because they're not waiting to, the following year to the federal money stops.
Right. Got it. Good. Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. And that's the end of my committee.
Thank you, Dr. Battler. Ms. Bloom, you are off the hook this today. Um, next, on to athletics and extracurricular activities with Mr. Odom.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Uh, don't have anything to report other than the turf looks amazing. It's a, it's a, it's a really good-looking turf, so can't wait to see all the kids, um, uh, be out there on, in the fall and spring sports.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. And I'll handle Exeter Community Education Foundation. Uh, we are getting ready to host our 17th Annual Golf Outing, which will be on Monday, August 4th, at the Redding Country Club. Thank you to everyone who has registered to join us. We have reached our golfer capacity, but there are still T-sponsorships available. Please check our website or Facebook page for details. Uh, Mr. Fidler, Burke's Career and Technology Center Joint Operating Committee.
Thank you. Now, I'll, I'll include the BCIU as well. And it's an easy report tonight because neither group meets in July. So we'll reconvene in August.
Thank you. I'm on legislative PSBA liaison. Um, yesterday, the House of Representatives moved House Bill 1330, their version of the General Apportionment Bill, to the state senate by a vote of 105 to 97. The House Budget Plan appropriates $50.6 billion, which is roughly $1 billion less than the governor's budget proposal. It includes an additional $526 million for the adequacy and tax equity supplements that began in last year's budget based on the recommendations of the Basic Education Funding Commission. This includes an increase of $75 million for basic education and $40 million for special education. However, if a flat rate for cyber charter schools cannot be established, districts that do not receive an adequacy supplement may not see a significant increase in funding. And that is all for that. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Morgan, is not here and he had nothing to report, but Dr. Heller, do you have anything to report?
I do not.
Uh, next is public comment on non-agenda items and no one is signed up. Are there any board members who would like to be heard at this time? Okay. Our next meeting will be the Committee of the Hold Meeting on Tuesday, August 5th at 6:00 PM. There will also be an executive session immediately following the adjournment of this meeting to discuss personnel. If there's no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting. Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.